Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, we have heard so much about the enactment of the Pension Reform Act of 2004 and then 2014. This was a major intervention in pension administration in Nigeria. The public service, particularly a new contributory pension scheme, was instituted to replace the defined benefits scheme. And new agencies of government such as the National Pension Commission and the Pension Transitional Arrangements Directive were established for the management of both the new and the old schemes. I wish to note that both Bencon and Gita have done a lot of work and recorded major milestones since their establishment. And we are seeing that clearly this morning. However, these achievements have also been accomplished by several senior governments, the number of which are still there, we have not surveyed them yet. This is why it is relevant this morning to state that notwithstanding the reassigning of the functions of working class, pension department and other departments under the Office of the Head of Services of the Federation to Gita. The office still has the power mandate of providing policy direction for the management of all human resource related matters of the federal government. It is therefore in this regard that the office continues to receive and address complaints on various pension related issues emanating from officers who retired both under the defined benefits and the contributory pension scheme. In a bid to support retirees in reserving these complaints, the Office of the Head of Civil Services of the Federation established a standing committee on pension matters. And this committee is delivered off officers from the Office of the Head of Civil Services of the Federation, Bencon, Ben Gita. This committee provides the opportunity for political stakeholders to meet and offer solutions to some of the naughty issues. In fact, the last meeting of this standing committee was held just yesterday. And apart from this committee, the office also in many other instances have weighed into matters that engage directly with the management of Ben Gita and Bencon. These are other initiatives as to ensure that retired officers are supported and that they have rightful access to their entitlements for their meritorious service to the nation as and when it's due. This is to say that this is not a one-off meeting, but the beginning of series of engagements. The Office of the Head of Services will be handling with stakeholders from across ministries, external external offices and internal units. At this town hall meeting, we also have the opportunity to rub minds and communicate the outcomes of the day's town hall meeting so as to enrich the ongoing review of the Pension Reform Act 2014. Distinguished ladies and gentlemen, it won't be fair of me if I don't talk about the commitment of the President's normal temporary labor administration to effective implementation of the contributory pension scheme and ensuring the welfare for all, nurses and retirees. Just like Dr. Farid mentioned, His Excellency has clearly demonstrated this commitment by the payment of outstanding pension liabilities to retired workers of the federal government, thirdly, ministries and agencies. Thus, on behalf of the retirees, we sincerely thank this president for this testimony because I'm sure it will inspire the rest of our people. In addition, registration through the Office of the Head of Civil Services of the Federation has initiated the referral activities to improve on the welfare of civil servants' service life, particularly towards the empowered officers before retirement. Some of these initiatives include the Federal Public Service Experianship Program, which includes the Agribusiness Fundup scheme and the Pre-Retirement Training and Business Start-up Scheme. We also are working to pay the backlog of death benefits. The government released two billion right here. But today we have paid close to 600 million shares from this amount of money to the tune of about 2.78 billion euro. Furthermore, the group line ensures cover for federal government employees in 48 entities have been approved by FED in a total of about 9200000 naira. And this is just a few of the things we have in this head of services. As I conclude my remarks, I wish to appeal to all stakeholders to observe unity of public openness on high level of debt relief in making our contribution services. It was having the moment that we are there for a collective purpose, which is to chart a sustainable, effective solution to our present challenges. This should answer the approach of the conscious consciousness that failure to do this by the top of the list is to give the professional a stick. Because every member of us, if not presently so, is destined to reform a potential retirement. Yes, I look forward to the best and quality interactions on this great opportunity.
We have the Civil Service of the Federation, the Federation of the Nations. Our secretaries were present. Retired Head of Service, Jeanne Robert Pukun, and retired Secretary Jonathan Masretani. The DG Bencon were represented. We attended Secretary's Pension Transitional Arrangement Directive, this is a GTO. Distinguished retirees, distinguished labour leaders, distinguished civil servants, leaders of the press, ladies and gentlemen. Good morning to you all. I'm delighted to welcome them to this all-important, hybrid town hall meeting. It's hybrid because there's physical participation and also virtual participation, hosted by the Head of the Civil Services of the Federation. This meeting has become very necessary in order to realistically address recurring issues in pension administration with key role players. The Pension Commission, Bencon, and the Pensions Additional Arrangement, PTA. This informs the theme of town hall meeting to let effective pension administration with further public service. The Head of the Civil Services of the Federation is committed to ensuring that our civil citizens, retirees, who have served our donation are treated fairly and get their deserved benefits at retirement. This meeting is therefore amongst other things that are going to provide an opportunity for Bencon and Gita to discuss bargaining pension administration, and also for pensioners and civil servants to interact and speak qualifications on critical pension issues at all times. That's a good meeting. Good to see you all. That's a lot. And for my language. And I'm not a politician of course. That's a shame. I'm a politician of course. You can say this, and I'm not a politician. That's a shame. I'm a politician of course. I don't think that the attention of all the fine line of the cases and my attention is in the case of the cases. My management system is a very good system. Unfortunately, when you think of the fact that there are some pensioners who only work for the area. Now, why do you have such pensions? They're not of the same pensioners as the membership. Now, we all deposit for the unemployment that starts March 1976. Now, which means that someone who was employed on the 1st of February 1976 is a separate pensioner with a membership. But how much time has this taken for pension, this month? So, we don't expect that that person is going to have a loss in terms of pension. But now that we have this compensation adjustment, there's a lot of these group customers are where the bulk of their pension is coming from the states. And as it seems now, the lot of states are not taking care of their pension liabilities. We've observed that these pensioners depend strongly as it were on that's the blood, the blood share of the pensions. So, all over the country, we have been investing a lot of our responses from our pensioners concerning how happy they are about this pension and that we have to thank the persons that are responsible for it. For whom to miss this.
The Head of Civil Services of the Federation. Premier Secretaries here are present. Retired Head of Civil Services of the Federation. Retired Premier Secretaries. Labour leaders. Our constituency retirees. But indeed, civil servants are present. Good afternoon, welcome to this presentation on the implementation of the contributory pension scheme in Nigeria. If we all remember, the journey of the contributory pension scheme also started much back in the 90s with the Vision 2010 Report. I would like those who have access to the Vision 2010 Report, please have a look at what was recommended for pension. And you would see that right from that time, pension was considered to be a felony issue, huge liabilities, so much that the federal government at that time, under the leadership of General Abacha, decided, though perhaps it was recommended in the Vision 2010 Report, that we should go on to the pension scheme as done elsewhere. Indeed, the likelihood was estimated, much later, a real acceleration of this idea in 2003, for the pension reports to be about 1.6 trillion Naira. Thus, given about 13 billion euros. If you look back today, you could see that it's really an outstanding amount. So, the reform started, and some of us were involved actually, so we could see some of this background information. We came up with the idea that what you, in order to do the contributory pension scheme, we need to have legal and infrastructure frameworks that will accommodate what objectives the federal government was trying to achieve at that time. So, to do that, the federal government sent in a bill, a rejected bill, to have the Pension Reform Act, which was passed by the National Assembly in June, and then ascended on the 24th of June 2004 by the President of the National Party of West Africa. And then the reform started on the 1st of July 2004. And so, there are basically institutions that were, that were established. But basically, the objective is to ensure that everyone, whether in the federal public service or in the private sector, receives his or her retirement benefits as a nominee. Remember, when we started, the private sector had no pension arrangement that is legislated. And indeed, pension coverage in the private sector was just one state per sector. But it was in every one family who worked in the private sector, only 13 of them had a pension arrangement. Also, the federal government decided there should be, you know, a plan that will ensure that people who work in the private sector had pension arrangement as well. One of the objectives also is to assist workers to save in order to cut out for old age, so, pardon, the sort of the stable of old age. And then establishing rooms for both the public and the private sector. The issue of the federal public sector was later actually amended in 2014 when the Pension Reform Act 2014 and trenches of coverage of the contributory pension scheme to states. Another objective is to establish a strong regulatory framework for the implementation of the contributory pension scheme. The scheme, as we all know, is contributory. Employer and employer contributing. I know we started with all this idea from Chile. General Augusto Pinochet. The first person in the whole world to start on the contributory pension scheme for Chile in 1980. And in Chile, if you go, you'll notice that the scheme is strictly private. Only employer contributes, employer does not contribute. But in Nigeria, we put that idea, or we came up with the idea that employer should also be responsible towards provision for pension. So, she don't be strictly private to the individual, but employer should also participate. So, as such, they then go for that employer contributes 7.5% of the monthly amount of the employee, while the employee also contributes 7.5%. However, this arrangement was changed when the Pension Reform Act 2014 was declared and Pension Reform Act 2014 was enacted, that employer now contributes 10%, while employer contributes 8%. So, a total of 18%. However, this is just being implemented for the federal civil side with just a couple of weeks, the president gave this approval of over 100 billion to the contributory pension scheme. And then part of which is being used now to settle some of the arrears that has been accumulated from July 2014 to date on the implementation of this. So, people would notice that some payments have been made into the retirements in the account of the 2.5% employer contribution. Because employer was contributing 7.5% and that makes this contribution count. So, we are paying the arrears between July 2014 to date, or as much as the money will take us to pay the 2.5% employer contribution. Now, this thing is fully funded in the sense that there is no pension liability. Because from day number one you start work, your pension contribution is given into, or is credited into your retirement service account, both employer and employee. So, which shows that the pension liability earned within that long month is kind of, as end of the month as you are paid salary as well. So, no pension liability, so it's fully funded.
I have just a few words. In fact, those who know me know me as somebody who doesn't speak a lot. So, I'm going to stay brief. As the president of Sipon, I'd like to do my work. And I cannot do my work effectively if I don't have access to Bencon. Since I came into office, I've been trying to get access to Bencon. They don't want to deal with us. And that's very sad, very demoralizing, very demotivating. When I speak, I speak on behalf of millions of contributory pensioners right across the country. They cannot all come here. I was in office for eight years before we got our registration certificate. And I want to make progress, but I'm getting a lot of resistance from Bencon. But all what he said as a representative of the DG Bencon is nothing but window dressing, as far as I'm concerned. It's nothing but window dressing. Because what he said is far from what I'm experiencing. Does he want elderly people to come and picket his office before they can interact with DG Bencon? In fact, I was looking forward to meeting DG Bencon today because I was ready to hold her by whatever, you know, just to hear me. We are their customers. We are the owners of the pension fund we are talking about. And yet, we cannot chip in one or two words concerning our fund, concerning the management, concerning the lapses. It's unfair now. Even all their calculations, their calculations are not open. There's a lot of secrecy. I was very happy to read about how one of my members took Bencon to court over the computation of his terminal benefits. And of course, he wanted this. I want access to Bencon. There are other issues to discuss with Bencon. I need to be mobilized as a union. We don't have any office yet, any good office yet. Not talk of hiring staff and all that, office equipment, vehicles, we don't have. And they are preventing us from getting that funding which we need to run our union. My concern is the welfare of my members. I hear what they are doing at Gita. And that's cherry news. And I wonder why Bencon is not doing the same thing. Let me tell you. The people we are looking at are your brothers. My members are your brothers, your uncles, your aunties. We are not spirits. I retired as far back as 2007 as a director of audits in the Office of the Auditor General for the Federation. My pension has never been reviewed. My pension has never been reviewed. I have more important things to occupy my mind for now. I'll come down to Bencon so that we sit down and then you'll recompute my pension. I don't know why, after retiring on grade level 17, step nine, I should be getting pension of less than 60,000 a month. I thank God for my children who are sustaining me right now. Otherwise, that money is not even enough to keep my car on the road and pay my driver. You want me to be chasing you around? I'm not going to chase you around. Because I've told my members, we are not going to fight anybody. But if only they can allow us to interact as ladies and gentlemen, there's nothing we want, we cannot get. Where you are now, I can assure you that many of my members have been there. I just mentioned to you that I retired as a director. And for affirmation, I was interviewing for the position of Auditor General for the Federation. That alone shows you the kind of person you are dealing with. I want you to go back to Bencon and please arrange for me and my executives to visit you. That should be the beginning of any movement in the operation of this contributory pension scheme. So far, what you have said is just window dressing. We want to really care about the welfare of pensioners, contributory pensioners. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, Madame Adban.
Sergeant.
Thank you, ma'am. The Head of Services and all the persons observed are Mrs. Tete Lio Yebi, representing the Customs, Prisons and Immigration Services under Gita. It's not, I just want to appreciate the Executive Secretary Gita because she's done all her best. But the question I want to ask, is it not time that we have a minimum pension for the country? Because in her report, somebody on 300 is now 23,000 naira. In the present circumstance, I think that is still too low for a pensioner. And that's number one. Number two, we have compass, we had different charts prior to this review. And we are still not properly informed as to, similarly, we got distributed compass. But all others who retired 1976, 77 to 92, 92 to 2007 are of the opinion that there should have been an harmonization. And we are yet to see the impact of that harmonization in this new pension review. Then, lastly too, I want us to be specific. The constitution says pensions shall be reviewed every five years. We had one 2010, none in 2015, and we are having 2019. I think a part of the issue we should look into is that I think a part of the issue we should look into is that if we say A is A, it should be followed to the letter. For years, review pension or no pension.
Now, provision, that is nineteen nineteen, Constitution of Federal Republic of Nigeria. There says, every citizen has the right to use his own money the way he or she didn't fit. Now, there was, in this pension something, contributory pension, you cannot use your money back the way you didn't fit. There's an incident, ma'am. Somebody was very sick. They recommended he should go for surgery. At that time, his money in retirement service account was over ten million. But they refused it. They requested that they should give him two million for a surgery. They said because of this act, pension and contribution, that it cannot be given. What's happening today, man, up till today? He's very sick. That is why I'm supporting what somebody was saying. Because it only that it did not add the constitutional provision that we should be allowed. Let it be optional, if you retire. They don't give us a visa like that, we have become the entire money to go invest in something. To go invest in something. Right particular section of the pension act is in conflict with the constitution, federal apparatus and civil, federal government and constitution. That's one. Two, why is it that the Pencum, Pencum, the template used in calculating your retirement? I retired for four years now. I have experience with them, which I don't like. The template for calculating your retirement benefit is very secret. They will never show you. So why is it that way? Why is it that way? Another one is this. This investment, using our money to invest in businesses. When you ask them, they will never tell you, okay, this month or this quarter, out of the investment of your money, this amount we have generated. And this is your dividend. They will never tell you. And I want to say, even if they tell us, I feel that tax dividend, dividend should be given to us direct, not to be added. What is the point? They don't to be added to, when they say it's in your account, it's in your... Thank you, ma'am.
I have a brother, you know, he are public service. I'm leaving you that name now. At appropriate time, I go to consult, I know, officially. I still remain Chief Dr. Tenpo Ufanyi, JP. I'm the President General of a newly registered Federal Pension House, private sector pensioners association of Nigeria. I want to commend our colleagues, the contributory pensioners. We are born the same blood. And so please do your best for them in this upcoming review. I was initially disturbed when I got the invitation day before yesterday, only day before yesterday, for us to call, madam. What is the head of service doing with us? It is not Bitad, it is not OAF. But after you have addressed us now, I want to commend you. And it is true that the pension matters were removed from you, the head of service to Bitad. But I want to assure you, like you have also acknowledged, that Bitad is not doing badly at all. But it is important and in the character of the number one citizen of this country, President Marama DuGwari. Others have commented, but we cannot stop commenting him. Because our experience before him was not palatable at all. And now that he's been on, that we are worried that twenty twenty-three is by the corner. Who is, what is going to happen after DuGwari? And we pray that God will give us another DuGwari in Africa. I mean, that's a payment of pensions and salaries to civil service. Yes. So, madam, I want to say that we in the defined benefit scheme, particularly with Bitad, that so far, so good. But like you have rightly said, it is not good. Yes. And some of the things we identified personally in my paper is that there's no serious appropriate synergy between the relevant government agencies in the administration of pension. It is good that every month, Bitad will present their schedule, will go through the bureaucratic bottomless. Sometimes monies come handy. Fifteen, they've submitted, concluded. Twenty-eight, they are supposed to pay, but sometimes delay in release of funds can be an issue. So in the proposed review, I want you to please look at that area again. It is not always good to share somebody's hair in his or her assets. In this review that is coming up, it would be very necessary that you involve the pensioners in the activity, you know. Because sometimes we are afraid of the well-known bureaucratic bottomless in the public service and the civil service. But I believe that from what you have said and what you are going to hear from us, and from the avowed commitment of Mr. President and the love he has and what he has been doing for the welfare of pensioners and senior citizens generally in this country, that in the review will bring more joy to senior citizens in this country. I want to say that it would be very, very important for the review of the twenty fourteen PRA to take everybody along, take us along and your actual... There are three registered pensioners union in Nigeria now. I'm happy you were able to invite all of us. And one of the things that I want to point out is that even in the Pencum Board, only one union is presented there. This used to be presented, we have done now. I want to hope that the review bringing all the, you know, the pre-registered trade unions in the core message reports, not begin Pencum Board. And I don't want to take much to attend. We are happy to be here and we are happy for what you want to do. And that is why we have decided to give you the title, the public service. Karidho, thank you very much.
Is working out another form of benefits for their people. So you can see that from the beginning, the model we choose failed. That is why we are having these problems here. Our pensioners regard the contributory pension scheme as a cost. Just as somebody has said, a director. In fact, I have a friend who retired and he was on about four hundred thousand. His pension is just ninety thousand. How will he survive? In talk of, so we are saying that the contributory pension scheme is like forced imprisonment. Our contribution is held by force. Somebody has contributed money at his age, he cannot access his money and, you know, do his own investment that will bring him dividends. Now, this money is given to the BFAs, they invest it, they are not accounting. The position of medical health is that we should go back to the old, what do you call it? The benefit scheme that has a figure that one can rely on. The problem then was corruption. And we say we cannot deal with those who made it not to work. In USC, USC, United African Company, the big company, John Holt and other big organizations, they are still paying pension. Who are the type of people working in their pension establishment that has made this thing to be sustainable? What is wrong with those who administer pension in civil service? That the government cannot look at them in the face and deal with them. Rather, it is now all age penalty, all age suffering, die and go. So medical health is saying that the idea of going to this contributory pension that is of no benefit to members, you can see the reaction here. It is of no benefit. So the position of medical health will go back to the old defined benefit scheme. Alternatively, when somebody has retired, give him his money, let him go and contribute. Because what we are doing now, we are using the civil service and the organized private sector to get a pool of resources, a pool of resources and give those people to manage, mismanage to the detriment of the pensioners. That is our position.
Well, there is a question of, let me take an online question because I want a bad thing. This question is an anonymous attempt. That's the person's name. And the comment, Nigerian security and written company PLC pension years, nineteen ninety-one to two thousand and five, have been subjected to hardship and tenure for thirty years with monthly payment of mostly one thousand or two thousand five hundred to directors. Attempts to resolve this have been frustrated by the Mint, that is the Nigerian security and police department. Currently, the retirees are not on the list as a federal government company. So the question, why is this anomaly permitted by Bitad? It should be recalled that before the CBA took over the Mint, it was evident that the federal government, through the Ministry of Finance, owned its controlling shares in the Mint. Then the second question, why then is Bitad hesitating, why then is Bitad hesitating to bring the pensioners of the Mint on board? Three, why is the treasured content scheme not extended to the funding of Mint pensioners? Four, how can Bitad intervene in Mint pensioners' life? As many of them are facing different kinds of debilitating illnesses. There's somebody else that wants to speak. So please, can you put the person on?
Hello? Hello? Can you hear me? Thank you, thank you very, thank you very much. My name is Ibrah Meneh. And I speak on behalf of the pensioners of the Mint. The same questions that you have raised already. And several of us have died. And I retired as Assistant General Manager. I reached the highest career point in the Mint. Twenty-one of the thirty-four years I spent in the Mint are in top management positions and I knew what I contributed to the progress of this country. Please do all that you can to put us to Bitad because the Mint is unable and unwilling to pay our pensioners. In fact, it's the same question that has been read, has read to our hearing right now. These directors, if we have been going the wrong way or knocking at the wrong door so that we can be heard and answered at long last. I retired twenty-two years ago and I'm still being paid far, far below what is due me. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for joining us. Okay, so there was a hand here, yes, the man of choices. Please introduce yourself.
My head of service, ma'am, I will be the stand of your existing person. My name is Akambe Abunsonyukwu, German therapist of the government, senior staff association. Same time, joining on German. Now, I am so delighted that you are here in person. It's not as if you asked anyone to come for you or standing for you. What I'm saying is this, for the case of pre-retirement training, my humble place, I want you to use this medium to do it in front of proportion. If all ministries will adhere to it, if all public secuaries will make sure that all retirees are sent on pre-retirement training. Because I'll speak to you now, I have listened seven to eight years lately, so it's my heart skips. If I see what retirees go through, as I speak to you, I'm not, without missing, we are trying to send some money to the retired director of my office last week. I, 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 my heart beats if I see what the retirees are passing through. My retired, we pray the damage is very pertinent, who should be to look into. And at the same time, ma'am, the issue of group life, when we is breaking our head, we talking about group life. And we are meant to understand that in the third meeting, I, some money we are mandated to pay in about two weeks' time. And this issue came up about two months ago, I'll speak to you now, nobody has been paying a dime. These people kept, they kept calling, I was, one time, the group life, they're sorry, my ministry. But if they call me, I don't even want to tell them. And they don't want funny thing, most of the less of them, they would die and at times don't even know what to do to reach out to it. They die and they would be one that was to pay the less of them are not getting by the less of them. Now we are in the fix, even the less of them don't get, the morning they will be surprised, who does, collect his money? So, ma'am, you know, crap, the call is not to the short. Most of the other issues that have been raised here, ma'am, if it is looked into to the letter, the name of the written code. Thank you very much.
So I'm trying to, I would think the issue of group life insurance, let's just, okay, yes. At the back, behind the man, so please make your interventions free. There are people online waiting to ask questions.
Right, I'm very, very grateful, madam. I'm Dr. Akaji, is my name. I'm the secretary of the, I'm the EOT secretary of the Contributory Pensioner Union of Nigeria. I have just a few comments to make back. Firstly, I want to observe that I want to thank the government and the Labor Ministry for registering us two years ago. We are very happy that we are not a stillborn. We are not a stillborn. We are still alive, but many of our members are dying. And every day we come and there, it's, we know death is ultimate. But there are a number of issues that could have kept them alive for another seventy years, twenty years.
Quickly, quickly.
So for that reason, we are saying that we need agencies like Bitad and Pencum to come to our aid. At the time we were registered, we need to be clear and savvy. We needed somebody to welcome us to this world, not later. It's in our file today, indicating that we exist.
Okay. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, ma. All protocols duly observed. My name is Glory Iromke from Federal Ministry of Health and Sports. Though I'm not yet retired, but I'm so interested in this because some years back, when one... when one of my directors retired, she was able to make arrangements to collect her pension upfront so that she wouldn't have to be collecting monthly on. So I want to find out now, why is it difficult at the moment for retirees to access their pension as in collected in bulk now? When it was possible as at twenty eighteen, when one of my directors retired, she was able to do it. She collected her money, she went abroad and started doing business. Why is it so difficult at this point and what are we doing? What are you doing with your good office to ensure that people who have retired would be able to collect their money? If they don't want to collect it monthly, there should be provision for them to take it in bulk, invest it in a business that will not only benefit them, but also benefit their families. So I'm asking, what are the things or the modalities being put in place to ensure that this money is collected in bulk? Thank you, ma.
Guys, this is eh a good thing for us, the people concerned to come out and commend TAD. Eh so please, can you, there are just a few questions. Eh the five-year review of pension, minimum pension and then some kind of harmonization. So please, Executive Secretary, can you just take this back?
Eh in terms of the idea of pension and trying of constitution. Eh recently, recently I have eh had a meeting with eh the chairman of the National Salaries, Incomes and Wages Commission. And eh we have actually looked into it and decided that the National Salaries, Incomes and Wages Commission going forward is going to be more proactive concerning these reviews. We're not going to wait until when the pensioners start agitating. So we, we, we actually are looking at getting a template, putting a template in place that looks pretty much like the last eh eh consequential adjustment. But if anybody looks at that consequential adjustment, you will see that there's a little bit of an inequity eh between people who eh between the consequential, the eh absolute figure for people from great level, I think it's seven and eh down to, yeah, because there was a sharp drop in the percentage increment from eh I think forty-nine percent to fourteen percent. And then going down for that eh group of TCO, it, it, it wasn't really an equitable thing. But then this is the first experiment of using absolute figures. So we're looking at proposing to government to have a template that has a gradient percentage increment going down from the lowest eh level eh eh down to eh the highest and what now things after that. So I want to believe that going forward, that eh we, we hope to be able to achieve that. In terms of the minimum pension, eh you, you have to know that eh pension is calculated based on certain parameters. Your salary, your last salary and eh eh exits eh whether the basic salary, percentage of it, your rent, your meal, so those are the parameters that are used to calculate pension. So to begin to now look for a minimum eh bar that you're going, the only way is by what we have already done. If the next time we have a consequential adjustment and it's an absolute figure, you say for instance, today you're earning eight thousand something and the absolute figure the next time puts you eh gets like ten thousand, you'll now move up to eighteen thousand. So because pension is calculated based on the years you've put in service, the level at which you retired and the eh step at which you retired. So that, that makes it difficult for you to now come out and say you're going to eh give a, a minimum pension. But I believe that government is going to look into that and see, you know, what to do about it. The only way in my mind is to keep eh applying absolute figures to the existing eh pension.
But like we say, this is not the end of this conversation. Eh I think from what we have heard to think is actually important going forward for us to continue this conversation until all of us are very comfortable. So please, eh Dr. Farooq, try to, the issue of timeliness, issue of gratuity.
Access.
Access, you know, for me, that one is eh key. Computation that is not open, people don't know how the, the benefits are being calculated. You know, those things, please just try to, as much as eh you can.
And also small, that don't expect anything big. This is the reality. But if you go to three places that contribute, and I mentioned here, you can make this bigger if you can, but contribute to more if you can. I mentioned personally, I am doing that since I began work with Pankom formally in two thousand and five. I've been involved with pension reform right at the eh base stage in January of two thousand and four. So, so the eh the issue here is you can get more money by having to contribute voluntary, which I mentioned is allowed. One of my slides talk about voluntary contribution, you can do that. Or perhaps getting government to contribute more, which I had the announcement that the president graciously agreed to give this money over a hundred million for us to pay the areas of the difference of two hundred and half percent. Why was this three percent not added? It was because we realized the pension is low. So I mean during the pension eh eh Reform Act amendment in two thousand and fourteen, that amount was increased from just fifteen percent to eighteen. I mean, it can be increased to twenty percent, twenty-five percent. I mean, it can be anything. So I believe that we can increase the money by increasing the base. Also part of the amendments is perhaps eh the head of service could actually push for, you know, an increased rate of contribution from eighteen percent to twenty or twenty-five or even thirty. It can be done and everybody will go home happy. That's one. Number two, if, if we have gratitude, then people don't need to take any loss from their retirement service account. And that will lead to a poor RSA balance, you know, just to program for pension. And that will give people probably double what they are getting today. Because when we take fifty percent eh loss or twenty-five percent loss, we are already reducing our pension by either twenty-five percent or by fifty percent. Now the law doesn't talk about gratitude, but it actually doesn't abolish gratitude. It didn't say gratitude abolition. So we can make an express statement as suggested by the second speaker in the, in the, in the new amendment. There should be gratitude. Unless that's gratitude government's want to pay, nobody has any need to touch anything from the retirement service account. You just program and you can see the importance of pension. Now, the critical issue I mentioned, I didn't say people are not given nothing. No, I mentioned, people are receiving pension, but they amend the pension increases of twenty five eh twenty oh seven and twenty ten. Those on contributory pension scheme have not been given. And this money when we calculated, we engage an actory and the amount came to about two hundred and forty billion naira. What advice government, if government should release, or release this two hundred and forty million, you can imagine what it will do to the accounts of contributory pensioners, of just federal government contributory pensioners. What it will do to the sizes of the retirement service account. Talkless of the recent eh consequential amendments that TAD is already implementing, but nothing has been given to those on contributory pension. You can imagine if we have all these three, whether we not much return or even bit, a bit is given. So the issue is, you know, eh we, we, we need these monies. If we are given people, definitely we'll have more. The issue of getting my money, all my money given. Okay. Yeah, you see, people, people can be given all their money, it's no problem. So we go back to the eh pro- permanent fund, but this is not pension. It's something else. It's retirement benefit but not pension. If I'm talking pension, it has to be periodic payment, whether monthly or quarterly or yearly or whatever it will be. So others decide to have pension or abolish, abolish pension completely in the federal public sector. And this is beyond Pankom, it's a decision to be taken by higher authorities. Yeah, anyway, what we decide was that we want pension or we want retirement benefit ID. Or I mean, everybody should have this money at retirement as I do away. But I'll give you a very good eh eh a very good story. Sorry if I'm taking your time. I was at this air force base directly opposite NM two in Lagos. I gave a talk to them. That's where the military was sleeping out of the good dimensions, the AOC, which I learned is the same size GOC in the army. I was taken to his office, I gave the same lecture three times one day. One for the AOC alone, one for the senior officers and one to the junior officers, one day. And after some time he retired, then he came to me, to my office, there was two other air vice-majors, who was an air vice-major. That he retired, he collected his money and that his pension was eighty thousand naira. So I asked him, how much did you collect as loss? He emptied the whole eh you know, the whole RSA. I had a similar case with a retired IG who took one like one, two, three over four of the RSA balance in one swoop. And then he was complaining his pension is slow. As I mentioned, you can't eat your cake and hardly, you either decide to take more loss and have lower pension or take less pension or loss and have more pension. But the solution to this is the introduction of gratitude. That will solve this problem for everybody. Now, there was this complaint that Pankom was going into financial matters. When I was talking, I mentioned that we do two primary responsibilities. The responsibility number one is social, to ensure that peoples, the people who retire receive their pension as an entity. But we also do these investments to ensure that more value is added to the pension. Because if you contribute ten thousand, for example, baanu, and at the end of the day, you contributed fourteen years, ten thousand, ten years, one hundred thousand. I believe you will be happy if you come back and insert just a hundred thousand, you see that it's hundred and ten or hundred and twenty. So definitely, the PFS are adding value. But if you check the act, from section eighty-five to section ninety-one, all of these sections are total of investment of pension assets. So when Pankom talk about investment, Pankom is talking about the sensibilities given to you by the pension reform act two thousand and four, as enacted by the National Assembly. So who are doing is part of our responsibility, we have to do it. Now, when I talk about employees being the most important regulators of the contributory pension scheme, I really don't mean that you should be chasing, as a retiree, chasing contribution or something. But what I was saying and I mentioned, you need to ensure that your pension contribution is actually veritable on monthly basis. And normally you receive your alert from your PFA as soon as this is done. If you don't receive an alert, you know that something is wrong. When you need to go to your finance, the party will find out what is happening. Why is my pension not remitted? That's just what I mean. I didn't mean that you should be chasing PFA from this, no, 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 no. You need to ensure, how do you ensure? You ensure only if you receive alert or you don't receive alert. When you don't receive a lot, you sit down, then don't blame anybody. You have something to do while you are actively working and that's what you're supposed to do. And just I'm telling you, you have that responsibility and it's important because you have these situations where people don't do that and then they retire and then they come to complaining to Pankom that my potential contribution has not been given. Now I'll tell you something. For those who are patently funded MDA's, when somebody retires, pension is not paid until the account is consolidated. And the consolidation of the account is that we look at what has been remitted as contribution and what has not been remitted. Those who are under remitted, they will be fully funded. Those who are over remitted, the difference is going to be deducted and I'll turn back to the attorney. And have both cases, a lot of them. The only problem was that those who didn't check to find out that their contributions who are not remitted, they lose their income for this unremitted contribution over the long time that this has not been done. So if you don't want to lose your income, you need to ensure that your pension is paid as you ensure your salary is paid. I believe if your salary is not paid, nobody will sit down. They will go and chase the, your account, you have not paid your salary. The pension is equally important and you need to take that responsibility. The minimum pension guarantee that is yet to be implemented, I said during my discussion, federal government is supposed to be given one percent of its minimum wage pay towards the implementation of the minimum pension protection fund, which will give rise to, I mean, to give us opportunity to implement the minimum guaranteed pension. Why yet to assume that one percent? But I said something, that Pankom and the pension operators had been contributing three percent of their income with which we are paying about four hundred or so, over four hundred eh people their pension. I mentioned that during the, during the discussion. So although I yet to fully implement the minimum pension guarantee because we had to get the money that was supposed to get from the federal government, we are doing something as far as that is concerned. But we cannot implement the minimum guaranteed pension because we don't have the necessary funding to do it. Now suppose we say, do the minimum pension for everybody. And then the money we have been collecting is only enough to save about ten percent of the total retirees that are, you know, that are eligible for the minimum pension. How do we do it? So can only do what we can do and that's why we are, and I mentioned it. Now, I really have to give an unreserved apology for the lack of access, sir. I believe it's eh something that I need to apologize. But whenever you are coming to Pankom, you don't need anybody, you can really come. Maybe you want to see an officer, probably the DG who you know, in whom I, is that? And I know at some point she was Black Solar Administrator, acting DG for over three years. So she's pulled between places. So definitely, you will not have her probably without a proper appointment. But now that we have a full executive committee and I would like to say, you know sincerely, is a member of that executive committee, I'm Commissioner Administration at the National Pension Commission. So at least when you come, I can handle a lot of things for you before you see the DG and I believe that the DG will see you. Yeah, but still, I would like to apologize once again for, 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 for this. Now, the issue of eh other funding for your union, I know that the issue is very contentious. Because what you want is for the PFS to be deducting some union fees at source and be relevant to you. And that is not allowed by law, thus we cannot implement it. Because in fact, the, and the assets in the retirement service account are prevented from even judgments by course of law, including the Supreme Court of Asia. So nobody can touch that money but the person who has the account himself. But I believe as union, we can have members to be committed to the union by giving eh But I believe as union, we can have members to be committed to the union by giving, um, committees. So this directive is by the banks where you can be getting monies from the banks directly based on the orders of union members. But to say P F As to do that is illegal. We cannot do it, unfortunately. But there may be several other ways that we can, you know, use and assistance to you as a union. I believe when we talk, when you come, definitely we will find some, something to, I mean, some ground to start. Now, yes, the issue of lack of pension review, I think I discussed this. But just for your sex up, I think I wish to say, yes, no pension review because we are expecting the ten percent money, the thirty-three percent money and this consequential, um, adjustment money. If we get it, as I mentioned during my discussion, everybody will laugh. Because other money will come through this, the money. Now, when we talk of two point seven trillion that I mentioned today, this money is a contribution and belongs to nine point three million people, including people who are working for the federal government, people from states, largely people from the private sector. Remember when I showed the statistics about nine point three, five point, about five point eight million were actually people from the private sector. The private sector owns over seventy percent of this money. Because they are there, so they contribute more. Most of this money belongs to them. Now, when you remove the states, you can see that there are others belongs to federal government employees and contributors generally. It's probably ten or less than twenty percent. So we need to put this sense into perspective that you can't, I mean, we cannot take private sector money and give public sector because when we were talking about the reform initially, one of the contentious issues that we were confronted with by the private sector was we are going to take out their money and use it for public sector. And we even have all these problems now, even in the newspapers. People that don't even understand how the investments are done. Investments in bonds and treasury bills, that is the safest investment you can make in any country. When P F As invested in federal government bonds and federal government treasury bills about almost seventy percent of the, uh, of the pension assets, newspapers were quoting, oh, federal government has borrowed sixty percent of the pension assets. This is the safest investment you can make. And the time when this investment needs seventy percent, you cannot get returns really from anywhere in this country better than that. Because rates were at eighteen, twenty percent while the stock market was going negative. If you put your money, every day, stop making money. So people that cannot put money in the stock market, they have to go to a safer, the safest, um, give them money. So a lot of people, I love to, I love to, I love to understand. But how is this done? But I believe, I believe that when the abattoir, uh, give no money and would get this money from federal government, and this kind of money has gone so much for the pension industry that really will come out for the fight. As I mentioned when I was discussing, federal government decided to cut the accrual rate by sixty percent in two thousand and fourteen. When this president came, I said Dankum was opportune to address him when it was being addressed and immediately he doubled the amount that was being given. And I mentioned now what he did three weeks ago, approved over one hundred million, we cleared all the risks. If you remember, there were times when people wait for two years before they collect their pension. Two years, this government reduced it back to just one year, to couple of months. Now they cleared all the risks. Three weeks ago. So we have made a lot of progress, really, we have made a lot of progress. Only that perhaps we are coming from all those issues of, uh, you know, delays in this payment and people are still planning. You know, and nothing so, I said to myself, that time, we sit in Dankum. Um, I was part of a team that brought a memo to the Z D G that wanted to allow people to be taking money from their retirement service accounts before the accrual rate is paid, even if it is just small amount of money. It's good idea, brilliant idea. Committee was set up, I was part of that committee, we came up with a solution. But we cannot do this amount of law. So had to seek permission from government. When we learn, there was no, because, I mean, how do you do that if we are going to contradict the provision of the law? We are coming, they ask us to contradict the provision of the law. So perhaps this is all the things that we need to change now when we come to this amendment, you know? Yeah, so. Now, um, there was this issue about a section of the constitution that says people should be allowed to use their money for whatever they want to use it for. I'm not your lawyer, presently I'm far apart. I read mathematics, mathematics. So, 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 so I'm really far apart from, from law, so I don't know law. But one thing that I know from my engagements with lawyers um, in the commission is that section one seventy-three, one, first section one of the constitution said that pension, yeah, public servants, just paraphrasing, not quoting, public servants are entitled to pension or the pension of the public servants should be, I think, moderated or guided by law. And today, the existing rule on pension is appeared in twenty fourteen. So I don't see any contradiction of the constitution really. You are taking pension, not my personal money. Because people has need to differentiate other as I mentioned earlier, this is pension. And pension has specific provisions in the constitution. And it has been moderated, regulated by law. And the law is there in twenty fourteen that gives Dankum his powers and the tax their house. The only agencies of government responsible for managing pension. So really, the constitution is fully obeyed. Now, secret template, I don't think really the template is secret. Anybody who retires and who wants his P F A to, to do the discussion and agreement and whatever will be sure the template and will agree to the template and will sign the template. Perhaps that individual does not understand the template. That means that I agree, but the template is not secret. In fact, it's available on website. If I know that, I know a P F A, maybe all of them, you can even go there and type and it can complete your pension for you, even now to see what you could add. So it's, it's, it's outside the public. But I believe that for a public, which I think is the case, I know ample explanation so that the individual will understand what is this, what is that. So for that, I think, yes, again, something that we need to take back home and talk to the P F As to make people clearly aware of what they are saying before they sign it. If this is a killer, I believe is a lass, I will take care of it. I have no doubt we will talk to the P F As. Now, there should have no report on reports. I believe because you receive only the alert. The alert will say, this amount of money has not contributed and this is R S A balance. So I know that's what the P F A send on a lot. But I mentioned, part of your rights, which I mentioned this morning, you are entitled to quarterly reports on your P F A. If they are not giving you this report, then again, we will take it up and we will change them because it is a responsibility to give you this report. Yeah, if they are not doing it really, it's an issue. But if you see that report, you will see in fact from inception, your total contribution, this total money earned for you from inception. And this is your total, um, accounting money, these are values accounting money. All of these things are summarized. In fact, even yesterday, I checked mine online, just using my telephone. Going home, I checked it and I saw. So you can check it on daily basis if you want. It's available online by all P F As. I know sending papers is all going to be economically viable because it will add to the administrative cost, because it cannot be sent in papers. And this report will be lost. And somebody can see R S A, text you a letter, T I H, and see what is in it. And the trouble with this things, I will tell you, we have seen cases where children plan, or in fact, even a housewife, plan the death of her husband, not killing him, but plans that he is dead because she knows, she saw the R S A balance, worked with the P F A and collected the money. I think Professor University, Sukar. So this is a top secret, it's only you who's supposed to get it. So sending this is by Uber is not really an option. You know, but if your P F A gives you an email to send it, if you give her, definitely they will send it. Um, quarterly basis or on demand, as I said, you won't use it for anything. You can see, or you can see it online. As I, if I want to do, I can show you, mine is there. Now, um, the issue of, um, C P S fell in Chile, I think you need to check your facts. Because in Chile, in twenty twenty-one, this year, the, um, the, 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 the amendment was the fourth is to allow people to actually fad with throw due to COVID. You know, as a palliative, this Dankum was actually approached on this, you know, when, you know, coronavirus started, whether we allow people to take something from the R S A as palliative to COVID. But as I mentioned earlier, the law does not allow us to do that, so we couldn't do it. However, in other countries, it's a possibility. So in Chile, they allow that people to touch their retirement service accounts twice. And the recent amendments that do is to allow them to overtake the third time as a palliative. And I also brought your attention, it's not only Chile, Nigeria and this side country, side world country that are doing these things. Go and read about auto enrollment in the U K. And you will see that even United Kingdom has adopted the contribution pension scheme. Just read auto enrollment, Google it now, read, you can see it. So you need to check your facts. Um. Okay, talking about visa issues group, why are, um, other agencies or government requesting to throw out other contribution pension scheme? I believe that the issues that we just discussed earlier, people are feeling that their, uh, their retirement benefits are low. Why are they low? Because we have all these enhancements that are not been done. Um, maybe introduce gratitude so that will, will reduce the pressure on the balance in the retirement service account. These are parametric changes that we can do that we don't have even chance of achieving. Because I look for ways that you can, federal government or employer generally can actually give additional benefits on top of what has been approved in the, in the act. So any benefits that anybody is earning from top to bottom is not abolished by the law. So although gratitude is not mentioned clearly, because the law says employer can do it. And I'll tell you, a lot of institutions are doing it. They have surveillance packages. So in fact, we are from the police surveillance commission. The police as a force will approve a, um, a surveillance package for the police. And it's fully funded by the P F A. Federal government is not contributing a damn bit. So not the ability of federal government and they are getting something. So the contribution pension scheme, you just say, is very much misunderstood. Maybe we haven't done what's possible as, as a commission. And we need to do more, but this is the most flexible thing that you ever have. Because really, those are their, everything is minimum. So it's not the upper bound, use a mathematician, you know, it's not the upper bound, it's the minimum. So you can go to it, ever high, no ceiling. Just negotiation, the head of service is here, all of us should go and negotiate with us as the chief employer of labor of this country. Wow, we need to, 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 to. As I have, we have, but the most important thing on all of this is the fact that at the end of the day, government is paying less. And we have to take care of this, we want this, we want that. But federal government can very, very support it. All you want has a promise that cannot be cashbacked. I mentioned, from the E F I S A B, which actually the federal, um, the national group of services and even national pension commission were involved in designing the S A B instrument. I was personally involved with that for a couple of years. And for that report, out of ninety-nine point eight million eligible workers in Nigeria, probably eight million, eight are employed in the formal sector, both public and private. And when you take, you see hypothetically, fifty percent are in the public sector, federal, state and local government. And look at the personnel cost that is being spent on only four million people. Is that justified? There will add more on that. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Professor Barry. I consider the association of pensioners have gone quiet now.
Not really.
You told me that in local, they don't have a lot of. Uh, tried to answer most of the issues that you raised. I think I'm, I'm not very well. However, I guess there's an area that I, just, uh, catching the reactions on both sides. Now that there's a review going on, I think that we should take the contribution of the retirees on board. They are the ones experiencing this thing. For example, the person that had eight million and needed two million for a life warranty of development. If, if the person had died, the eight millions will go to somebody else. You know, so, so that kind of thing, we need to, we are most disciplined. Like you said, Chile has the opportunity for contributor. So they withdraw once, twice, and then now they're not back. And we need to have that. They've gone a long way in, in, and we've seen life threats. You are a retiree, you don't have any other income. And then you have some savings there and you can only seize, you can't charge. I, I think even that fact will make the person go through the past that. So please, uh, let us make a note of that. And in the review, they are seeing. This is a view that, um, I think I have gotten from this meeting today is that this kind of interaction is absolutely important. There are so many free misconceptions that this, of this, just this one actual meeting has been able to spread enough in the minds of so many people. I think that stakeholder engagement is something that Dankum must as a matter of fact take on. Very, very important. When you have customers and you don't get feedback from your customers, you cannot improve. So please, absolutely. The third thing and maybe the final thing that I want us to take away to do is that most people don't know which P F A are performing well, which P F A are not performing well. So I think Dankum also must take, you must able to enlighten those of us that want the best P F A. And it will also change the P F As that are not, uh, ready to see, you know, to come up. So that we can say, to say that it's allowed, we can change our P F A. But we need to know which P F A are performing well, which ones are not performing so that I can move my account, um, one to the other. You know, as, as I wish, or you, that was a, was a year I can move it. Let me be informed, let me, let me set an informed decision. So please, Dankum, you need to, to give it waterly with, uh, annoy or annoy publish something about the P F A to, to help us take informed, um, decisions. Because as, as I. Because as, as an investor, I want the highest return on my RSA balance. But I don't know who is giving me the highest return. Because there's no, there's no way I can get that information. So please let us also, um, look at that. Uh, finally, before whoever is going to see the results of that, I need to appreciate everybody that has come to this meeting. When we started meeting, I looked at the polls and I saw people standing. And after two, three hours, I can still see, uh, people standing. It means that pension matter is something that is very clear. So thank you for coming, thank you for staying. Um, like we said, this is just the first of the series of webinars. So please, if you have anybody, especially, I think the window for contributions to the amendments or the review, when, when the, the. As soon as possible, yes. So my suggestion to the unions, um, is that please articulate your positions. It's absolutely important, nobody can do it for you. Articulate your positions and either take it to Telkomsel direction or pass it through the Office of the head of service, or do both. Submit one to Telkomsel, submit one to the Office of the head of service, so that we can collect based on, we have done one submission, I'm sure we're going to do many more based on, as we see, um, comments. So thank you all very much, we had a very, very good day here today. Um, I think that you guys also deserve a round of applause.
The head of the school service of the preparation, uh, my colleague, government secretary present, and also joining us virtually. Thank you. The representative of the director, Dr. Baruch Umar Alim. The executive secretary, pension traditional arrangement director. Let me align the already assisting protocol. But let me begin by thanking all my chief lord for making a first book for us to witness this day. And in this, this topical initiative of the chief performer of the public service of the preparation, Dr. Polashadee Mirsham. This interactive town hall meeting will determine effective pension administration in the public service is timely. Not only for being indicative, but also for being responsible and effective in reforming the service and making it very responsive. Our sincere appreciation and gratitude goes to the National Pension Commission, the Pension Transition Arrangement Directorate, the pension fund administrators, labor union leaders and other stakeholders for having time to grace this occasion. Our appreciation also goes to our host, the parallel minister of Inas for making this game really available for us. I want, I therefore, finally, I want to seize this opportunity to thank you all and add you to the relevant stakeholders to ensure that please make payment of pension bill paid promptly as I went you. Thank you so much for coming and good luck in this year.